It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this City of Menneson City Council meeting to order of September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilman Gregor.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Present.
Mayor, we noted for him at five here this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Post Thomas for a prayer.
May I bow our heads just for a moment of prayer? Heavenly Father, we just want to, once again, just thank you for this day, how you just watched over us and kept us throughout this day and brought us to this meeting tonight. I pray that you just bind us all together in one accord as we move forward to try to move the city forward and to do what's best for the city and its residents. I pray you give us wisdom, knowledge, understanding, to know what is best for the city and that one day we can look back and thank you more for the great things you've done for the city. In Jesus' name we pray and thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to request approval of the previous session of September fourteenth meeting minutes.
Honorable mayor, motion to approve minutes of the previous session of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
The only thing I saw was that when you were talking about Pirates Charity, it says Fire Charity. That's the only thing I saw that needed change. It actually says the Pirate. It should be the Pirates Charity.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Page three. Oh, Linda Lacy, sixteen twenty-four Maple Avenue. Page three, item I and J. Motion to approve Resolution Number Ten of the City of Menneson approving and authorizing the submission of the FY two thousand and twenty-three CDBG application. What is Resolution Ten?
Do we have a copy for that? We can make you a copy, I guess. Well, the resolution is simply to approve it. It doesn't have the amounts on it. I would be more than happy to get you those amounts. I just don't have them with me right this second. I can get them after the meeting upstairs.
Okay, but if it's on the agenda, whoever wrote it up had to know what Resolution Ten was.
Well, here's a copy of the resolution.
Okay. And then item J, and it says motion to approve the modification and changes to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen CDBG program and budget for the City of Menneson?
Yes.
Wait a minute. It goes on to modification number three would be. That's number three?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, and then down here where this is the asterisk, it says reduce the budget amount for public services for the youth activity from forty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. You needed that to create a new activity, and what was the new activity?
That will be a handicap ramp. It will be some kitchen equipment and some new flooring.
And you're calling that an activity?
That is what that money will be used for.
That's not an activity. That's remodeling the building.
Yeah, Linda, they named it Public Facilities Improvement. If you look down, yeah.
Well, why do they put new activity? You know, I actually watch what I read and I go by what I read. So, a new activity to me means something entirely different, which you wrote.
Or it could be purchasing of equipment. Yes, okay.
Just need to be very clear on what just put on the agenda and how you use the CDBG money. Oh, it's not on the agenda, but I will speak about that CDBG money at the end of the meeting.
Ernest Telegraphus.
Your address?
Twenty-nine Rex Boulevard, Menneson, Pennsylvania. Okay, so going back to here on page three, reduce the budget, okay? You didn't explain to Linda, why did you take money from here and then threw it on to the other one about a new activity? What was the purpose of doing a tea berry shuffle here? What's the reason for it?
In order to be able to utilize the money in the most efficient way.
You could use the money that you had before, put forty thousand. It's in the same building for the same body.
No, there was specific items included, thirteen thousand dollars. It included basketballs, popcorn machines, and various other equipment. It did not include handicap ramps, kitchen equipment, or flooring.
Then who approved the forty-four thousand in the beginning?
Council did a year ago.
A year ago. Who was here a year ago? You were.
Two thousand and nineteen is when that came.
Well, that wasn't a year ago. That was four years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not even precisely talking English anymore.
You can be more than welcome to come to the public hearings.
Well, you know, nobody knows about it. You had a public meeting Tuesday, and only two people showed up. Last Thursday, you had a town meeting, and I was the only one with the fire department. There was nobody here.
What other questions you have?
Okay, I want to know, why are we honoring? What are you getting out of this? Number eight, Resolution Eight, in compliance with the National Program for Minority and Business and this and that. What's that all about? Executive Order eleven six-two-five. Who's executive orders at? Eleven six-two-five?
The states.
The states?
The states.
Okay, and the state is requiring you to do something?
Absolutely.
Like what?
To have this.
Have what?
Have this resolution approved.
For what reason? What's it going to take Menneson to? That's what I want to know.
It allows us to have the CDBG funds at all.
It doesn't say here required.
It's a requirement for the CDBG program.
Okay, but it doesn't say here required.
You're getting your answer.
I got your answer.
Okay, but the public, when they get this, it's all hard work.
You're sitting up here accusing through your questions and they're answering your questions. What more do you want? It's a requirement for CDBG.
The people don't know. If I didn't bring it up, nobody would know, okay?
Is this something we have to do every year?
It's for CDBG. It's on the agenda.
Okay, why isn't nothing spelled out on the website?
This agenda's on the website.
Where at?
On the front page.
On the front page. When was it on? Last week you told us the website was down.
It's back working again. No, no, but if you go to YouTube, you can search for Ron Moser, and you can see the entire proceeding.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You got it. Okay, settle down. First off, he's got the floor.
I know he does.
I never talk.
No, I'm sorry. You got the floor. It's not your call.
Okay, so. Okay, this is for Tony. Tony, where are you getting the money?
All questions be directed to me.
Why?
That's Robert's Rules of Order. That's what the resolution says.
But Tony, Tony's the one that's.
I'm sorry. Address me.
I'm not going to address you now. I'll address Tony later.
Thank you.
I only have one question on this.
Okay.
My name is Pena, forty-five Montrever. On the money that you were talking about, about the old armory, I call it, the youth place, I questioned you the other day on going up for bid, that you could not have a contractor who bids on a job give you the number what it's going to cost. That I said to you also that you have an engineering company that is hired by Menneson, and thus the person is supposed to give you the number in order for people to bid. That's, to me, is totally unreasonable, uncalled, totally out of line. It's like giving, you know, an advantage to somebody who's going to bid. My question is, have you corrected it?
What the purpose of this was, was to establish some funds to use. It will go out for public bid as a result of this meeting.
Now, I know it's going to go up for public bid.
There is no way to undo something, Pena. I'm sorry. It was done that way.
Let me, let me.
But I'm just telling you that it was done that way.
You said that the other day, and I don't agree with you. You have an engineering company who worked for the City of Menneson, so when they build anything in the city, they have to go through. In this case, for the curb that is being done for the old armory, I call it, or the youth center, they got one of the contractors who's going to bid on a job to give them a number.
I got a question. How do you know that contractor's going to bid on the job?
Because they said that.
They didn't say that.
You said that on Tuesday.
I didn't say they would.
You and the girl that was here, both of you said that.
Sometimes.
I can only, look, I'm sure you taped it.
Sometimes the engineers do have to conduct their own due diligence, and they will reach out to contractors to.
Do you, do you have an engineering company in-house to do those things?
They do. Sometimes they need additional information.
Pardon?
Sometimes they need to get additional information, too.
They don't go through the contract who's going to bid.
They don't know that they're going to bid.
Well, that's what you're saying tonight. That's not what you said on Tuesday.
And here's why they're not going to have any advantage, because there are no specs built yet. The engineer's going to put the specs together. They're going to put those out.
Who is the, who's the engineer?
WEC.
That's who should do it to begin with.
That's who's going to take care of it.
But that's not who they had in mind. They asked for a number to see what it was going to cost, and that's what we're going to do. I questioned it. I absolutely believe the Westmore Engineering should be the people who prepare the package.
They will.
They will.
They weren't on Tuesday.
Because it's not ready to be prepared yet.
I'm only telling, so why have a meeting if you're not prepared to have a meeting?
It's a planning meeting.
There was no one here, other than him and the lady who ran the meeting.
It's a planning meeting to set forth the CDBG budget. That's what the purpose of that is. It's the city. Having a public hearing is required by law, saying, hey, we're going to do X, Y, Z project for A, B, C costs. That's just the process.
The women, the woman that was running the show that day, and the mayor was here, she called the contractor to give him an estimated cost.
That happens.
And I said to her, are they going to bid on this? He says, oh, I think so.
They'll bid on it once the specs are created to whatever needs to be built.
I'm just telling you what took place on Tuesday.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Oh, there isn't?
No.
Oh, I don't know.
There's no contract.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
Okay, come on, let's get control again.
You got your answer.
You got an answer? Is there any other questions you have?
The question that you just answered.
I'm not going to argue with you. You have my answer.
No, I don't have to argue. It's just fact.
Okay, come on.
Will you let me finish?
No, I will not.
You're saying I'm wrong. I'm saying you're wrong. We can agree to disagree.
I didn't say you're wrong. I said that's not the way it works in, on a business world. I don't know how it works on your law firm or your attorney.
I'm telling you, that's how it works in municipalities.
It's totally wrong what they did.
Okay, that's your opinion.
And it shouldn't be this. You go through Westmore Engineering.
They're going to put together the specifications.
That was what I said on Tuesday.
The specifications or not?
They corrected it. They corrected it from Tuesday to today. That's all I'm telling.
Okay.
Which I'm glad they did. Don't get me wrong, because that's the way it's supposed to work.
Any other questions? Agenda items? Let's move on. Anybody have any correspondence they'd like to report? In which case, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, mayor. I drafted a deed from the city to the Redevelopment Authority, which was on last meeting's agenda. I also worked with the city clerk and city administrator for the Civic Center vendor agreement for, I guess it's a fall vendor event down at the Civic Center. Also working together to put some more demo hearings for the county demolition project. Looks like that's going to be before council meeting on November ninth, unless anybody here has any conflicts.
Sounds good.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our city treasurer. May I give his report?
Mayor, I gave my report last meeting.
Okay, thank you. City Controller, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. The General Fund Shawlery Federal Savings Bank checking account, the bank reconciliation as of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The beginning bank balance as of July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three was seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Deposits made, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twelve cents. Expenses, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and nineteen cents. The ending balance as of August thirty-first, seven hundred and forty thousand, six hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents. Outstanding checks, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and six cents. Outstanding deposits, two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. The reconciled balance to the bank statement is seven hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. That concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to just spend a couple of minutes talking about some of the things going on in the city right now. First off, we did hold the town hall meeting on September the twenty-first. It was really to feature the Fire Department One and Fire Department Two discussing the duties, accomplishments, and the needs of the firemen. For those that are interested, the video is on YouTube. Just simply search for Ron Moser. There is several virtual meetings held with pin dot PNG and representation from Senator Ward's office. We also had, Mike and I also had a great meeting today with Senator Ward and State Representative DeVanzo this afternoon to discuss several possible grant opportunities. With the help of DeVanzo, Representative DeVanzo, we will have an in-person meeting with PNG executives to be held sometime the week of October ninth here in Menneson. Senator Ward and Representative DeVanzo will probably be present during that meeting. In order to clarify a question that was asked to us last meeting, I believe it was, the question was, how much did the audit cost? I didn't really know. In two thousand and twenty-two, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars on our site, with our audit company in order to get the audit. In two thousand and twenty-three, it was twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars, or six percent more. That's about what inflation was during that time. Bear in mind that that cost is not the only cost that we incur when we do an audit. It has to be duplicated. It has to be reported. It has to be filed with many different agencies. In fact, I believe the number's up to about thirty-two thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars that that audit cost us so far that we did, just for everybody's information. Bear in mind, we also paid for a special audit earlier this year, earlier, yeah, this year. We paid sixty-eight thousand, or sixty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for a special audit on the line usage account, which saved us, saved taxpayers one hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. So, all audits aren't necessarily bad. That resulted in a very positive thing. Last but not least, we received today notifications from USDA that we're one step closer to being able to go out for bid on Sewer Project Three C. Three C is what I call manhole to manhole. So, there are some things that WEC has still got to provide to them, but that project is getting closer to being a reality. So, there's more to come. That is all I have for that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an expenditure of not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the line usage fund to repair a street collapse and related repairs on Ross Straver Street.
Is there a second?
Second, mayor.
I'd like to correct that number. That is really sixty-five hundred. We have a, we have a quote. It'll be six thousand five hundred dollars. Any other questions?
That's the one that we're going to put the lien against the property.
Correct. Yes.
I have a question, mayor. I have a question on this.
Uh huh.
Should we not state that there will be fifty percent down as required by the contractor and the balance upon completion?
If you feel necessary, we can add that stipulation to it absolutely.
I think we should have.
Okay, so it'll be sixty-five hundred dollars, fifty percent down at the time we issue the order, fifty percent upon completion.
This is under the.
Under, well, under the bidding threshold.
What is the bidding threshold for the public?
I believe to get three telephonic quotes, it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars now. Public bidding is up to, I believe, twenty-two thousand, twenty-two five hundred.
You are correct. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of the Menneson City Park walking track on behalf of the Menneson Community Development Corporation and City of Menneson Recreation Board on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from two P.M. to four P.M. for the annual Menneson Trunk or Treat celebration. And in case of inclement weather, the event will be held at the Upper Parking Lot of City Park adjacent to the restrooms.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the attached contractual documents and fee schedule for the upcoming vendor show on Saturday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, from twelve P.M. to six P.M., which will encompass a craft, food, and entertainment vendor showcase as a fundraising event for Civic Center programs and operations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
This is being sponsored by who? The.
Civic Center.
Civic Center.
And Rec Board.
And the Rec Board. Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay a deficiency in the CDBG budget allocation for the Ninth Street Anthony Madison Memorial Park Restoration Project in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents to contractor David Morneck for work performed in invoice using the ARP fund currently in account of the City of Menneson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, mayor, I have a question. I just need more of a comment that we need to be more diligent and make sure what's supposed to happen does happen, that the allocated funds are enough to cover the project, and we have everything in place to make sure that this doesn't happen.
I agree, and we got several projects that are going to start up here soon, so.
We need to be a little bit more.
Absolutely.
More aggressive in making sure things like this happen, because this should not happen.
I agree. Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay invoice for Urban Design Ventures for Administration and Technical and Program Services rendered under their contract for the City of Menneson CDBG program for the period of October first, two thousand and twenty-two, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from CDBG allocated funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Question is, this is from October twenty-second to August thirty-first of this year.
Yes. October of last year to.
Two thousand and twenty-two.
To August of this year.
October of twenty-two.
Yes.
To this year of August.
Right.
What happens after August?
It starts another building progress.
Yes, for last year's CDBG. It's contractual amount.
All right, call the roll, please.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve City of Menneson Resolution Number Eight, to approve a statement of goals and compliance with the National Program for Minority and Women Business Enterprise, Executive Order one-one-six-two-five, City of Menneson, Pennsylvania.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution Number Nine, known as the Fair Housing Resolution in City of Menneson, that prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing and land to be used for construction of housing or in a provision of brokerage services because of race, color, sex, national origin, religion, familial status, families or children, or handicap disability, as is prohibited by Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution Number Ten of the City of Menneson approving and authorizing the submission of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three CDBG application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve modification and changes to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen CDBG program and budget for the City of Menneson. The fiscal year two thousand and nineteen CDBG modification number three would be, reduce the budget amount for public services for youth activity from forty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Create a new activity, Public Facilities Improvement, Menneson Civic Center, in amount of thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Funds will be used to upgrade the kitchen equipment, install a handicap ramp at the front entrance, and new flooring.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Mayor, question.
Yes.
Should we not define a possible cost first before we put a set amount on something?
Well, I think that what it really boils down to is that's all the money we have available in CDBG, and that it will, we will go out for bid. If it exceeds that, we just simply don't do it.
I'm just afraid that, I don't like the idea of throwing or knowing there's thirty-one thousand dollars for this, because, let's be honest, if any of us were bidding a job, you'd bid it for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
You'd have to be able to satisfy the handicap ramp, the flooring, and the kitchen equipment.
I, okay.
This is not, this is, this is.
It still has to go out for bid.
It still has to go out for bid, yes.
And whenever the bid comes in, if it's, if it's above that, we just, we just don't do it.
This is just setting the CDBG budget amount.
That's all it is.
Can't go over that.
Okay.
Call the roll. Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Art Chakowski to give us his report.
Thank you, mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general account in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund account in the amount of one thousand fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Art Chakowski.[1689.62]
Yes.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational fund account in the amount of one hundred and dollars and seventeen cents. All invoices are attached as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Liquid Fuels account in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars thirty cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund in the amount of three hundred and thirty dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Line Usage Account in the amount of eight hundred and ten dollars. All invoices are attached as attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Refuge Authority in the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars twenty-four cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer sixty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents to the payroll account from the general account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And make a motion to pay the September two thousand twenty-three retired employee account invoices in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-three cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilwoman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nester?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And the balances are the ARP Fund, two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents, Liquid Fuels, one hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents, Recreation, four thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, Healthcare, one thousand nine hundred, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents, Debt Services, one million eighty-six thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cents, Refuge, one hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-four cents, Fire Escra, twenty thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents, Grant Fund, fifty-four thousand one hundred and six dollars and seventy-one cents, Parks is fifty thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, Line Usage is seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and one cent, Payroll is seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, and the General Fund has five hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and seven cents. And Mayor, my report's done within five minutes.
Thank you, sir. This time, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Thomas to give us her report on streets and public improvements.
Good evening, everyone. The Streets Department report for the month of August twenty twenty-three. Got garbage twice a week downtown, cold patched several streets, cleaned out and repaired catch basins throughout the city, pulled up signs, marked forty-two P. A. One calls, cut city lots, put a plate on a sinkhole on Ross Straver Street until repaired, painted crosswalks by the school, cleaned up streets after storms. Um, the Streets Department were down to, but one of those, one of the employees are back, the other one is still out, and helped the Parks Department as needed. And we did receive already a list of the repairs that are needed at the library from Director Dave Zelkow. That is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nester, would you like to give us your report on public safety?
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of council, rail officers, citizens of Menneson, here's the following report for the public safety for August two, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, starting off, the Police Department receipts for the month of August twenty twenty-three. Parking fines and forfeits, a hundred dollars. Miscellaneous, miscellaneous collections are the following: copies of police accident reports, forty-five dollars. For total miscellaneous collection, forty-five dollars. Court receipts for District Justice Office is the following: vehicle code fines collected is eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Crime code fines collected is the following: five hundred and twelve dollars and forty-seven cents. City ordinances collected is fourteen dollars and forty-two cents. Code enforcement collected, four hundred and six dollars and six cents. Total receipts for the, from the District's Justice Office is a total of one thousand eight hundred eighty-three, or thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Total receipts collected for August twenty twenty-three is a total of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Following citations for this year for, uh, for the Police Department is sixty-two, year to date is eight hundred and three. Following is the code activity report for August twenty twenty-three. Habitation permits, eight. Collection letters, twenty-eight. Animal complaints, twelve. Total of, uh, eight raccoons, four dogs, including rats. Miscellaneous complaints, thirty. Health inspections, four. Office meetings with residents, eight. Citations issued, six. Hearings, two. Building permits, two. Zoning permits, three. Most were complaint, grass, noise, abandoned vehicles, and homes. The following is the report from the Menneson Municipal Fire Chiefs' report for August twenty twenty-three. Here are the following: vehicle accidents, one. Structure fires, two. Wires down, down calls, one. Natural gas leaks, one. Miscellaneous, uh, medical assistance, three. Automatic fire alarms, eight. Landing zone, one. Vehicle fire, one. Illegal burn, one. Public service, one. Calls outside the city: structure fire call, Carroll Township, one. Structure fire, Chalory, two. Total calls, twenty-three. Total firefighters, two hundred and nine. Firefires per call, nine point zero eight. Total man hours, two hundred and twenty-one. Uh, I currently do not receive a report for the, uh, Mont Valley Emergency Medical Services for August twenty twenty-three. Other than that, I yield the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on any.
How about?
I can leave if you'd like.
Wow, my apologies.
They still got twenty-five.
Okay.
Councilman Gregor, please, your report.
Parks Department report for August twenty twenty-three. Helped the Civic Center as needed, picked up litter, and got garbage in all of the parks, cut all the parks, ball fields, and prepared for events. New electrical boxes are in at the City Park, walking track, and helped the Street Department as needed. Uh, Lois, could I have a copy of those repairs that we requested?
Yeah, it was an email. I can send you that.
Yeah, just send it to me.
I'll forward it to you.
When you get a chance, just send it to me. I'm just curious.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now is time. I'd like to remind everybody that under the, uh, the decorum for resolution that we passed, uh, comments will be limited to three minutes. All questions will be directed to me.
If all questions are directed to you, then why did the council started giving me answers?
Well.
No, no, you talk.
No, no, I got nothing to do with you.
He's the one that wants to monopolize.
I'm gonna make this real simple. When you start saying the city's doing things wrong, that's when I get to do my job, okay?
What did I say they were doing wrong?
You're accusing them of.
What?
I don't remember.
You guys have a set mind frame that is so defensive.
I'm not being defensive.
Well, yeah, because you can't even tell me what I was accusing them.
Honestly, Ernie, I don't remember what.
Then, then why you butt in? Okay, now, the big question's this. Six months ago, we had those fires. The two buildings look like hell out there. You're not doing nothing about it. You just tell everybody, you gave it to the county. I talked to the county. They got no plans for that until next year. So they're sitting there, uh, degrading the whole, uh, city, okay? Now, why aren't you people going after the two owners?
Neither of them had fire.
Oh, okay, so you can't put a lien on them or make them pay something? So in other words, I could buy property, don't, uh, all insured, and then when something goes wrong, I'll wait for you to bail us out.
You still have to have money to demo, demo it. The person that demos it can put a lien on their property if they so desire. You have.
Oh, if so they desire, so they're not gonna do it then?
I don't know if they do or not.
If they're gonna get money from the city, why would they put a lien on the, uh, property owners? You're talking on both sides of your mouth, okay? This is the problem here. You, you got no transparency. You don't even tell people. That's why nobody shows up at all these meetings. Two people, three people, and the only people who come here in force is when they want money from you. That's when they come in as a gang, okay? So, and the, 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 the people here are getting ripped off.
There's been no money spent for demolitions out of the city.
Okay, so I, I wanna know, did she pay the rent? She's supposed to leave in four months.
Yes, she did.
Okay, she leaving in four months? October's four months.
And she will be out by four-thirty tomorrow afternoon.
She is?
Yes.
She's been out there loading up advance.
Okay, very good, because you guys keep dragging everything out.
Partying to roll away, going against the long way street.
They are. So, I wanna get this set. When we have questions to the council, we could only talk to you, and you're the only one that's gonna answer us back. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that first off, all questions will be asked to me. I may from time to time ask some, something of one of the other council people, but I am in control of this meeting.
So all you're concerned about is control dictatorship, not, nothing else?
Because I can't get past.
Okay, well, you haven't done anything for the city. Tell me what you've done for the city.
Your time is up.
What have you done for the city? My taxpayer's going, the, the partners are still there.
Please sit down.
Because he, he goes back and forth.
Mayor Moser, I live on Spring Drive.
Okay.
Which is the road, you know, where, it's a freeway. There are kids that are playing on bicycles. They're on roller skates, and people fly through there. There is no speed limit sign. There are no speed bumps. It's an accident waiting for a place to happen, and I don't want to see it.
Okay, um, well, first off, there is a universal speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour in the city. If it's not otherwise noted, marked, that is what it is.
There are no signs saying.
But, but that is an ordinance, by ordinance. The speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour unless otherwise noted. The fact that we have speeders up there, um, I will notify, I will work with our police to see if we can't come up with a plan to help minimize that.
The police go through there. I mean, they, they go through, but there's no watch children sign. There's nothing.
So is.
There's nothing. But that's, that's my concern, and I want it to be noted.
Okay, and, and I will, uh, take that under advisement. That's a good idea. I don't have anything.
I appreciate your concern.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry.
Spring, this is a spring drive.
Yeah. Can I get your name?
Patricia Kilvati.
And your address?
Twenty-eight Spring Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madeline Dudas, thirty-two Shaw Drive, Menneson. Uh, I want to ask, is the city still considering to put a pavilion in that vacant lot?
The city is not. The redevelopment may in fact be approved, may be thinking of that.
The redevelopment?
The redevelopment authority.
They, are they gonna publish that so that we can go to a hearing? Are they gonna just duplicate a service we already have?
They do have.
And, and take a, a prime piece of property and?
They do have public meetings. They meet, I believe this.
I thought they had transferred that property over to the city to make a decision on.
No. They have property over there, we have property over there. We're not in process of considering putting something over there ourselves.
When are their meetings?
I believe it is the second Tuesday, is, third Tuesday. Third Tuesday, five-thirty, here.
How can they decide to put something?
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with the three-minute thing, basically.
Tell him to take that off. We pay tax.
No, no, just be quiet. I wanna make a comment here. I don't need your help, okay?
I will finish answering questions, though.
I have no problem with that, except cutting her off like that when you were talking back and forth. You know, that cuts into her time. You should let her finish asking the question. I'm sorry, I recall my first few, two years in office, when I had individuals come up and they tried to enforce the three-minute rule, and certain individuals who were sitting up here refused to be silenced. I got a problem with us doing this. I truly do, and, uh, we're infringing on, not only, we're infringing on people's First Amendment rights, and I know that there's been rulings that three minutes sufficient, but we've set precedent in the past that we let these people finish their comments. Uh, I'm sorry, that's just, this, this really bothers me. I think it's wrong.
I don't believe that I said sit down, but by the same token, it did go off, and she walked away from the mic.
Well, that's because you should, you should at that time said, please finish what you were going to say. I'm sorry, this three-minute crap is exactly that.
Thank you.
Can I just, so you're saying that the redevelopment authority can make a decision to do something with that, their property there without any? Any city response to it, any city's response to it?
I definitely am against having a pavilion downtown.
He's in favor of it. He said it.
I'm totally against it. Mr. PM, I just, please speak, please. Thank you. I'm totally against having a pavilion downtown. It's, it's just not fruitful for the city, but the same factor, though, if the authority owns something, is an authority, they can do what they want with their property.
The city got nothing to say?
The city got nothing to say?
Uh, the city meets codes, am I right?
Yeah, if it meets the zoning code, there's nothing the city can do about it. It's their property.
But we don't need a pavilion.
That's a prime piece of property.
They have, they own their own property, they can-
I know they own their own property because they gave one away to a ridiculous business between a fine restaurant and a library and watched their dump trucks and all their gravel and stuff next to it to make their town look so beautiful when you drive down the street.
Thank you.
So, I, I, I'm appalled, I'm absolutely appalled. If they put a pavilion, when we have that magnificent park with bus transportation parking and seating and electrical setups in it, if they're allowed to do that, just- I'm gonna get on the authority, I guess, then. Who, how do you get on the authority?
Get appointed.
You get appointed.
By who? Who points you?
Council points it.
Council.
And how long are they, what are their terms?
Four-year terms.
Four-year terms.
There has to be an opening.
Is there something online that shows you what their terms are?
Yes.
Okay.
It does, but by the end of the year, this year, there may be one coming up, but I don't remember.
There is.
I, I mean, I, as a city council, I would be alarmed. I mean, just what they did already is appalling.
Okay.
And that's not bringing big tax dollars into the city. You know, as a taxpayer, I, you know, I, we can't get the library's insurance paid. They're out there selling pies and doing everything to pay their insurance of a city-owned building. For the, for the building and to ensure the building and the contents, and none of you are appalled by that? You don't have to raise, do bake sales and sell things to pay the building insurance. I'm sorry, I'm over.
No, no, I know you are, but that's okay. The thing is, Madeline. They haven't, since I've been in office, which is in my, I'm in my thirties.
They never paid it.
That, well, they've never come to us for something. I've never heard that they had a roof leak. I'm, you know, for, I've been here for a year and a half, half as buildings. I, not a word. You know, if they had, if they had someone that would-
It was only once when they asked for some fun, funding for the-
For the children's coordinator.
Yeah, that was it.
That was it.
But I, I think that they've individually, over the years, spoken to mayors and business administrators-
I've been here over three and a half years, and outside of the children's corner, has never come to us.
And the, whoever is the advocate from city council to the library should have been aware of all these things and should have been bringing it to council.
They didn't tell us anything. Dave stays in contact with me all the time. You can ask him. He's never gave us that list.
I mean, I walk around in there and, and I-
He's never given us the list, never given us the list.
If we don't know what's going on, we can't do anything.
If he don't give us the list, Ernie, we won't know. You know, we, we work twenty, we work five days a week, so if they don't give, he's the director. So if he doesn't give us the list, we are not gonna know.
Yeah, put the timer on. I just wanted to say, to go on record, I went to a meeting, to the redevelopment meeting this past week. He's in favor of putting that pavilion in the middle of town. On this past Tuesday, he said also he's in favor of putting that pavilion in the middle of town. Now, I know that they already voted on, but I wanna make sure you know that he's in favor of it. Because the redevelopment committee, if you follow us through, you know, he was a part of it, he worked with those three people there. Okay, so it's like a sort of a going-on thing. But what I wanted to say, Mayor, you, okay? Somebody told me that there's only two people come and talk and keep other people from coming to the meeting. Is that true? Did you say that?
I said, I said it sometimes discourages others, yes.
No, it's all of the time.
Okay.
Because nobody comes to the meeting to hear you because you don't, you're not transparent, even though you say you wanna be transparent, you lie. You got a fake newspaper that carries you. That's fine. That's not I say, that, that's fine. You know, you got them in your pocket, that's fine. But all I'm saying, don't tell the people a lie because you're not being transparent yourself.
First off, let's talk about the pavilion for just a second, if you don't mind. The pavilion was really-
Stop the clock.
No?
Well, then, then don't talk on my time.
Okay, go for it. Continue on.
Okay. All I'm telling you, that you be lying to us, that you wanna work with us, but you never ever once called one of us to get it in a job. The job that you offered me the time, you came to the meeting that you wanted to disband the whole group, 'cause it don't need you. That's what you said. So you put me at a committee that you wanted to disband, okay? And you go to, you only go to two meetings. One is to the garbage meeting, which is us. And the other one is to redevelopment where you become like, you know, like almost like a chicken. Or you, you know, chickens when they eat, they go like this, and that's what you do. So you're really not a good person, not a good mayor for Monessen, and we need young people to run for the damn job. Get rid of this foreigner that come from another state into our ground and don't even know what school makers that until someone shows them. So get alike, get back on your horse, put your cowboy hat, and get the hell out of here.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to make a comment. I was here at the last council meeting. You didn't use that. Why didn't you use the timer then?
I really believe that we gotta start getting better control of the meetings.
No? Why didn't you use the timer last meeting?
Because I wasn't concerned.
If you wanna get in control of the meeting, you should use it all the time.
And I will from this point forward.
Not when Pastor Bergen is here speaking.
From this point forward, I will continue using it.
And then another thing, I am totally in agreement with Mr. Gregor, and this timer doesn't mean nothing to me. If I have something to say in the town where I live and pay taxes, I'm gonna say it regardless, whether I do it here or whether I do it one of the news medias. 'Cause everything I say is for everybody in the city of Monessen, not me, just everybody. And the second question I wanna know is, you took CDBG money away from Tenth Street to put that improvement on Third Street. Are you giving the money back and allocating it again for Tenth Street?
That was the plan on Tuesday, yes.
How, when you gonna do this?
Twenty-twenty-three, me, money.
Twenty-twenty-three, we might, maybe.
No, I wanted in writing that you're gonna replace Tenth Street, the money that was taken for Third Street. Because Tenth Street has been like that for twenty years, and don't say that there's nobody that lives up there. That one section of Highland Manor is gonna remain there. There is a street before you even get to Highland Manor. Oh, I did that under three minutes.
You did. Good job.
Good evening. My name's Adrian Ottaviani, eleven-sixteen Reservoir Avenue, Monessen. I do wanna thank you for getting the house condemned next to me and working on that, even though I'm still having an issue with the rats and the snakes and other crazy animals like raccoons and that kinda stuff. I'm having a big issue with that stuff, but I do wanna thank you for the part of it. If you can be of any help about the critters, I would so appreciate that. And I want to inform you, you have another house that now that, that they boarded the door up on the, on the blue one, they moved down the street on Division. The door's wide open, there's a mattress laying there, so you got the kids going in there now.
You have an address on that house?
I have a picture of it, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, we need to get code enforcement up there, no doubt.
Yeah, but I do wanna thank you for that part of it. If you can be of any help with the rodents, I would so appreciate it and like kinda all-
We do have, we do have wildlife specialties which should help you with those problems.
Okay, and also, I cleaned up most of the sidewalk in front of that property. But I don't have a chainsaw. I need the city to cut the trees so you can walk up and down the sidewalk.
What's, what's the address of that?
Mine's eleven-sixteen, I think that one was what, fourteen? It's between me and the corner of the Vision and me.
Eleven-fourteen Reservoir.
Yeah, I think it is.
And you're eleven-sixteen, that way if you need Rodney.
You'll see, what, mine's cleaned up and half of it, I cleaned up half of it. I just don't have a chainsaw to cut that shit down.
The city really can't go and start cutting people's trees down that-
No, it's growing all the sidewalk.
Okay, well, the sidewalk is part of the responsibility of, of the person in front of it, too.
I, I think we, we have street crews that actually even cut downtown. I don't see it being a problem cutting sidewalk. I don't know about you, councilman. But I mean, we've had-
Now, I, I do have one more thing, too.
We'll get, we'll get somebody up there.
Okay. I had mentioned about the gas company cutting, breaking up the sidewalk. I've contacted them twice now. I haven't gotten nowhere. They left it with gravel, broke up two, two four-foot sections to fix their shut-off valve, so they need to replace the concrete. Now, I've tried, I'm not getting nowhere, so can somebody from the city get somewhere with them?
We, as a result of the meeting that we had today with Senator Ward and Devanzia, they, PNG will be in town to- talk to us about these problems, and they will be there with us, so we, hopefully, we'll get a little bit more stroke.
Okay. And for the animal control, who, who's in charge?
That'd be Marvin, code enforcement.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Ted Harhi, three-four-four, Helen. I wanna go back to July twenty-first, when the mayor explained, Monessen was shut out of LSA funding, which I thought was ludicrous. And your answer was, I was just trying to keep the city alive, please. You talked about you had a, you used Mike Korpas as your excuse, and he's the most seasoned politician in this room, worked for a state senator, ran for state representative. If I'm wrong, Mike, correct me. He got the comprehensive plan money, ninety thousand, from GCD. We had to pay ten thousand in the city to match that. It's only five percent different than the previous two or three comprehensive plans in this city. And that's only because things have changed a little bit naturally. I agree with Pino, Mr. LaFever, Ernie, Linda. I think you're protected by the paper. I read things that come out six, six days after they, they occur, and, um, for example, there was a gentleman that killed somebody two years ago, was found in Monessen, it was on the front page of the Tripping Review. None of these are directed at, from Mr. Gregor, these comments. He's also on the front of the Observer Reporter. It never appeared in the Valley Independent. Found that interesting. Caught in Monessen, killed somebody in Uniontown, not in our paper. Do these cameras have audio also?
Yeah.
No, they do not.
Um, is there a reporter here, by the way?
No, TV, the YouTube.
So we don't have any reporter at all, not Kristen Linden or whatever her name is. So it doesn't hold water for the LSA. It adversely affects our police, it adversely affects our firefighters, and adversely affects what we have down there in the ambulance service. And you chose, we're hurting for money. Hear that from Wartekowski all the time, hurting for money. We're adding all this money up, we're not spending any in the city. Everything that we spend is coming from loans that we had to take out to do the sewage, gas lines that are put in, the county helping us with rescue funds to tear down blighted structures, which I was called the demo man twenty-five years ago. We, we kept after them, they didn't after that. And then we got to about four hundred blighted structures. The last thing, or two things. I read another with interest, your comments about Serenity Farms. They've got a tie-in with somebody. Is that Matt Urum? 'Cause he's the one that lowballed something up at St. Augustine Church, which is Epiphany, and wanted to build some structures up there. Not a good thing. Westmore Community Action, I was on the board for fifteen years. Were the ones that put, can I speak, or do you want me to stop?
Go ahead.
On the junior, senior high school, we copied Jeanette. Tay Walton Ball was the executive director. We went over to Jeanette, we looked, first time, home buyers. I think they're beautiful homes for a first-time home buyer. If you disagree, you're, you're allowed. We put twelve homes up there. They still look good. That's the way to go. This Serenity Homes thing is not a good thing. I'd asked at the last meeting, I wasn't in the talking thing, but somebody asked me, and I said, we should have a drug task force. You referred to the chief who's not, is the chief here?
Yeah, we're in the process of forming one.
It's not up to the chief. That's a good thing, because we have a definite problem. You said you met with Krishnan Suthanthir, and it was gonna be, bring manufacturing. That's all scam. I, I go back seven years on that one. He's not gonna bring any, but his comments were exactly what he said before under Lou Maverickis. I don't wanna bring it in here. He blames Sharaw and myself and other people and blah, 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 and a severe drug problem in Monessen. And we don't have a drug task, task force, so that's good to hear that. But again, I would appreciate if the paper started to print not half truths, no truths, nothing at all, and let's put, let's print the truth. And be respectful. I like the civility because I was at the meetings when Maverickis used to scream. As a matter of fact, I was at the first economic summit, which I didn't believe was really what it was, but that's another issue. And he screamed the whole thing. He ruined whatever little bits you guys accomplished.
Thank you.
I just wanna add one thing. You're so much into control. How is the citizens able to talk to anybody? Is there a phone number for each person? Is there a website that each of them have an email so the public could interact with them? Or we all have to go through the dictator? You, explain this. You guys don't know what representative government is, and unfortunately, the taxpayers don't either. They, they just put their own person in with their own labels, that they did their job. So i- is there a way for the public to communicate with each of you guys?
Can I talk?
Ernie, if anyone calls and wants to speak to us, they give them our number.
It doesn't work that way, because a lot of times they call, and you're not around.
Slow down for a second, Ernie. Slow down, Ernie, let me, let me say something here real quick.
Ma'am, I need to leave at this time.
Okay, no problem. I appreciate it.
Call the city, they'll give you our email.
They do, they give you, they give our numbers.
Okay, so first off, you call City Hall, I'm here from about seven o'clock in the morning till, and tonight's seven-thirty. Well, and I will try to get ahold of them if necessary.
My name's Ed LaFever, I live on Keystone Drive. I was looking at the city website, and I was interested in the Monessen Redevelopment Authority website. The outline on the city's webs, the website about the redevelopment authority includes these words. They, the redevelopment authority, are responsible for providing a regular report to city council. Now, my questions are this. How often is this report given to council?
Well, first off, I'm the liaison to that, that board. I, I, I go to that board every meeting, every time.
Is it once a month?
I am, excuse me?
Is it once a month?
It is once a month. They did not meet- in August.
Do you get a report?
I get the agenda.
Oh, we got in a report.
Well, that's what they do.
Okay, then let me ask you, this is followed up. How do any of us here have access to that report? Is it posted in City Hall?
I'll tell you what, I will talk to them, and from this point going forward, we will post the meeting minutes from the redevelopment authority on the city webpage.
Okay.
Well, but that is the report, is the minutes or the report? That's, that's the best that we can do.
That's what they can do.
That's not a report, though.
Okay, the third is, if an opening comes up on the board, how's it filled?
We advertise, and then council will, will make a decision.
Advertise where?
In the newspaper.
The Valley Paper.
Okay, I just have two comments about the board. Something in the past confused me. As I recall, a former mayor held the redevelopment authority board meeting in a building that you own, mayor. But now that you are mayor, the former mayor holds the board meeting in City Hall. Why didn't the former mayor always hold the authority's meeting in City Hall?
Because the building was locked and they didn't have access to it.
The authority didn't have a key?
No. That was the administration of the time.
Okay, the other comment. Having a former mayor in charge of the authority after his involvement in the selling of the old health center, and it sits there unoccupied, that is not redevelopment. That's ludicrous.
First off, let me answer, let me shut this off. One thing I didn't talk about in my meeting is I met with Krish, who owns that building this week, and I got a tour of that building this week. It is very nice. He's fixed the heating and cooling problems. It's, looks new inside. He restored that building immensely. He, well, I'm getting to it. Please, let me finish. You, you wanna know about the redevelopment, about that building? You wanna know about the building?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm answering his question. So first off, the building looks nice. I suggested that possibly he, it's time for him to, to start marketing that building for space, for, for people to come into it, rent spaces from it. His response was, he wants to maintain, he doesn't wanna be a landlord. He wants to bring in his own medical people and form an operation over there.
What kind of operation?
Did he give you a timeline?
No, he did not. But he did, first off, he did pay for, he did pay for that building entirely. He owes us nothing for that building. He invest- I didn't do any such thing. The, um, I lost the train of thought, just disrupted too much, I'm sorry.
He paid for the building.
He paid for the building.
At a D, 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 D discount.
Well, he, he sold it at what the city council of the day sold it for.
You know, Mr. Mayor, that, I, I agree that you're in office now and, and you're in control, but that was the former mayor's responsibility, which he did not fulfill because he was head of the redevelopment authority, and he did not see through rectifying that problem, that sale that he had. That he should go after the owner. He's in the redevelopment authority, not you. He's responsible, not you.
It was city property, not redevelopment authority property.
But it all started with him.
It did, it did.
Okay. One other comment.
Okay.
If I can turn the page. Could you tell me, what city regulation permits an outgoing mayor to appoint himself to the redevelopment authority board prior to a new administration taking over? If that is permitted, that too is ridiculous. Ludicrous.
This is before me, is all I can say. I was not mayor at the time. I don't know, I can't say that.
Yeah, Mayor, but there has to be some sort of unwritten code or a written code in, in the city regulations, that something like that can't happen.
The proper thing for him to have done would have been to resign as mayor-
Exactly.
And then be appointed to that office.
He's appointed by whom?
By council.
What, was he appointed, or did he appoint himself?
The laws have actually changed since, so I, I really don't know.
He should resign.
Well, maybe, but- I, I didn't say he didn't. I didn't say, he should have resigned, and he should have been appointed by the, either the, 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 the next mayor, that would, the acting mayor, or the council as a whole. I wasn't even on the authority at that time. That was after I got the piece of ground, but I was not associated with the redevelopment authority at that time.
It met in your building.
Excuse me?
It did meet in your building, though, the redevelopment authority.
It did.
It did. You were there?
I was there.
As an observer?
No, at that time, I was on the authority.
Okay. One other thing, Mr. Harhi was here, and he talked. You know, I haven't known Mr. Harhi for a while. I just actually really met him in the last few weeks. He has a lot of credentials. He served on city council. He served on city council. He was mayor of Menneson from 1998 to 2002. And he served in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives from 1998 to 2016. I'm just suggesting, with that background and learned experience, would you in city council really accept or reject advice from him with all of that experience? That, you know, he's a Menneson resident. He has all this experience. Not that you'd agree, but would you be willing to listen to him?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but he will not be transparent on doing anything about it. But he's not transparent. She's talked about it. But he's not transparent. He lies.
Thank you.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor. You know, to get on the Moser train in your last article, I said this to someone. I don't know if it's worth anything. If you want to sell Menneson and, and its environment and why not, why not take out a one-page ad in a Pittsburgh paper? Sell Menneson. Talk about its tax base. Talk about its improved housing. So if, if we're out to sell Menneson, maybe we should sell it through a newspaper. Maybe there's some business who would want to put a satellite company in town. The transportation, the rail, highway, it's all good to Menneson.
It's all good.
So it, it, I, that was just my suggestion that an advertisement would be good.
He talks about being transparent.
You have to define transparency. Is there something new? Well, come on, come back up.
I don't like him talking over. I did not like.
Well, come, come up to the podium. I'm sorry.
I didn't want to talk over anybody. I didn't like what went on with Maveracus and his crew. And I, it's the team. And they run the show. What happened when Maveracus lost, numerous things, but he appointed himself illegally. That was in the Valley Independent in the paper. And that was corroborated by the attorney. I don't know which one who was serving at that time. I know it was Gary Mattis Law Firm. I just don't know which attorney was there. And said, he can't do it. Nothing was done. I was one of the appointees with Mark Alpert. We should have assumed the seat on the thing. The, he's, Maveracus is more of a mouthpiece. He's not the, he's not the core of the team. He's the big mouthpiece. And then he just said, we're not going to do that. So he made the judgment on his own. And nothing happened. He should not have been on the redevelopment authority. And he was, that was a little scheme that was done. I know exactly how it occurred and why it occurred. Control. And nothing happened. The flip side is, when the redevelopment authority was invited to come in, they were not going to be given a key. They were invited to come in and meet. When they did, someone would let them in and then leave them out. That was what occurred. And I know that to be fact.
Yeah, I, I can't.
Just so you know.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
I, I have to address this.
Councilman, go ahead.
Let's, let's, let's get something straight. Let's just get it straight. For one thing, what happened in the past is gone. I can go back and I've heard stories about tons of other administrations that really sent this town down the river. I have no clue. I wasn't here. But I'm not talking. I'm talking. If I ask your opinion, I'll ask it.
And you know what? I'll give it to you.
No.
No, you won't.
You know what?
No, you won't.
Don't scream at some girl. Don't scream at me.
Don't interrupt.
Don't interrupt me. You understand? Just say yes.
I stand fully. No transparency.
Don't interrupt.
The point is, I know what happened during that time. Now, how it happened, I can't speak for it. I was on the redevelopment authority and I was the chairman. I won an election. I resigned my position. And then it was up to, at that time, according to the bylaws and according to ordinance, that the mayor could appoint the person to fill the position if there was an open position. That is what happened. I don't know if there was this, there was that, but that's exactly what happened.
What happened for what?
On how he got on the authority. Yes.
The mayor appointed. He appointed himself.
He was not appointed. He appointed himself.
I'm just telling you how it transpired. I'm telling you how it transpired.
Okay.
It doesn't?
No.
Just telling you how it.
No.
It was between November and January swearing in. November and January swearing in. At the end of December, he appointed himself to the redevelopment authority. He also loaned against, he took a loan against the bonds, which is not the way to do it. I'm an investment banker by profession. You borrow against that. Or, I'm sorry, you don't borrow against that. You, I'm just telling you what he did. He took $938,000, we don't know what, what, and another $300,000. That is illegal between November and, and January swearing in then. But he did that. And was permitted by.
What is the point? How many years later?
You learn from the past.
Exactly.
So I promise you, I will not appoint myself to the redevelopment authority.
Is that all it is?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
All you guys are here, right? And he, he tells people he wants to be transparent and all this. There has been an opening in the sanitary.
Okay, wait a second. Please address me, the purpose.
I'm at, I'm at, look, if, if he was to talk to you, I'll talk to you. I'm asking him.
No, the, the, please address me. That is a decorum.
Okay. You said, I'm going to ask you, being that you're so smart, that you're basically not too slick. At the end of the day, there was an appointment to be made, an opening in the garbage.
Address me, please. Turn around. Address me.
I, I hate to look at your ugly face.
I'm sorry, but that's what you're going to do.
Let's not be personal. Come on.
If we don't have control of this meeting, I'm going to ask.
Let me finish. So you have not appointed anybody on our job for two years. Two years you have an appointment and you say you want to be transparent and work with the people. Why you lie?
Appointed you.
You're never going to fulfill anybody.
Well, I appointed you.
No, only because you wanted me out of your way.
No, sir.
That's the reason. Because you came back at the very next meeting and said that that department was not needed with him present.
Okay.
Okay, so tell me why you don't appoint somebody in that meeting or that department right now?
Because I don't have any applications, applicants.
Oh, you're so full of shit.
Do we have any, do I have a second?
Mayor, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
You address me.
I addressed it here.
Get up to the podium.
There was almost five people here at that meeting where Mr. Mayor Ricketts.
Nobody's denying it. Nobody denied it. What he said was, the mayor had the authority to assign somebody to the authority. He assigned himself.
Were you appointed?
I, he appointed himself. I don't know if that's legal or not, but that's what happened.
It is not legal, but there's a paper.
I, I don't know and I don't care, because I can't undo that. That was something many years ago. I wasn't in control.
But the damage that he's done, like, for example, the damage that he's done. You have a glorified block building next door to the thing. Mike Korpas, was that part of your comprehensive plan?
Which building?
The glorified block building next to the library, that they sold for $8,000 to the redevelopment authority, when a woman offered through you, to Maveracus and the redevelopment authority, $20,000 for the property.
That wasn't until after it was sold.
Well, that's.
That was after the fact.
That's not what I was told. But the point is,
I'm sorry, it was after it was sold.
is, is they fudged it and said, his mother's going to put her tax office down there, when she never intended to at all.
I don't know.
That was this, that was a scam. That was part of the scam.
Possibly. I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just giving you the information, as, as I know to be true.
Thank you.
And transparent. So wait a minute. That was not part of your comprehensive plan to put a glorified block building on Donner Avenue next to the library?
It was to bring business in.
That's one question I have to ask you, Mr. Mayor. Is that your vision for Menneson to put a, let them put a pavilion and a building next to the library when the library wanted it?
Well, first off, the library had that property available to them long, for many years.
The redevelopment authority never let them use it.
They let them use it all the time. They had the opportunity to buy it. They, they had the opportunity to buy it. We've got no control over this meeting.
Yes, you do.
No, we don't.
Yes, you do.
You interrupt every time I open my mouth.
But I'm telling you, what I witnessed were my own two eyes. If this is the vision that the city council had and the redevelopment had for Menneson, this is a lot.
Does anybody else have any comments?
And I don't like your smirk when people are telling you what's wrong with the city. You have a very disturbing smirk when you're shitty. And I don't like it. Shitty.
Honorable Mayor, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting on Thursday, 7:50 PM.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Please adjourn.